... of the United States of America, and a republic for which is named, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Open the meeting from the Council of Republicans at this time. No one wish to address the Board this time, you'll have a chance at the end of the meeting. Minutes of the previous meeting of September fifteenth and September twenty-sixth. You all have copies, is there any additions or deletions?
Make a motion to accept the minutes I'd written.
Motion made by trustee Menard, seconded by trustee Hoprow, any discussion? There be no discussion, although in favor, vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Uh, bills.
There is one bill on a supplemental list. I didn't, uh, it's for ninety-nine dollars and seventy-three cents. It was for cleaning of the library.
Make a motion to pay the bills, trustee Men.
I'll second that. Motion made by trustee Menard, seconded by trustee Jefferson to pay the bills. Uh, is there any discussion? There's no discussion, all those in favor, vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Correspondents.
We received a letter from Merck Science Engineering from Mr. Ferris, uh, was regarding confined space training. On behalf of Merck Science Engineering, POC, we'd like to thank the Village of Russell Point for allowing us to participate in the confined space entry training provided by Mr. Cruz-Grey. The training was valuable, and Mr. Cruz-Grey did a fine job. It was also fun being in the same room with the various Village crews for a day. Thanks again, sincerely Doug Ferris. We received a letter from Jane Magano, real property director of the County Real Property Office. It was addressed to village mayors. Subject is age exemption in persons with disabilities and limited incomes. Partial exemption for persons sixty-five years of age or over, and the partial exemption for persons with disabilities and limited incomes have been amended to increase the maximum income to twenty-four thousand dollars. The previous ceiling was twenty-one thousand five hundred. This results in a corresponding increase in the sliding scale portion of these exemptions. If you pass a local law resolution allowing new income ceilings, please forward a copy of a local law or resolution for our attention. Thank you.
Does one wish to act on this? We do, we need to, uh, we need to authorize a local law.
Yeah. I've, um, I've never seen it before.
I think we just need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, publish it for the local law.
Based, we'll ask our attorney to draft a local law in, uh, within the next tax season, so if we give it to him now, hopefully he'll have to us by the first of the year, and then we can, uh, have our public hearing and go from there.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by trustee Menard, seconded by trustee Pentfield, any discussion? There be no discussion, all those in favor, vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Our next letter was a letter from Mr. Tom Greenwood, it was addressed to Mayor Rivers and Village Board members. It was dated September the twentieth. I wish to tender my resignation as a member of the zoning board of the fields affected the state, where in the near future we should be moving Plattsburgh. It has been a stimulating and enlightening experience to have associated with such a dedicated group of people. I send a special salute to Carol Manfield, who is such a spectacular Village employee and covers all the bases so well. Best wishes to all for the future, respectfully, Tom Greenwood.
He had a motion to accept this. Motion by trustee Hoprow, seconded by trustee Pentfield, any discussion? There be no discussion, although in favor, vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Accept that with regrets, please. And while we're on that subject, uh, I could think I'd have to have a motion to this, but I would like to advertise in the paper for people that would be interested in serving on the zoning board of appeals and also the planning board to come up with a list of people. Would anybody do that in the paper, asking anybody, please call the Village office and put their name under the list? When you motion to that?
Sure, you can publish.
I'll make the motion now.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Menard, any discussion? There be no discussion, all those in favor, vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Could I make one introduction as well, that we send a letter back to Mr. Greenwood thanking him for his service on the zoning board?
Um, the next correspondence we received was a, an email from Peter Walsh from the Department of State. Um, the contract, this has to do with the Main Street Road revitalization plan. Contract mentioned above is being placed in mail this morning, will need the mayor's signature. My apologies for the contract now having arrived sooner. Upon this Department of State's receipt of the signed contract from Mayor Rivers, the contract will be forwarded to the New York State Comptroller's Office for approval, which normally takes about thirty days. With sign off by the Comptroller's Office, we will have an executed contract. While the contract is being reviewed by the New York State Comptroller's Office, we begin to get the requests for proposals drafted and ready for lease and entered into the New York State Contract Recorder for a regionally significant publication. They can also begin to discuss the Village's process for reviewing and ranking the proposals. Uh, the contents of the RFP should rely heavily on and summarize the contents of the contract work program and include a description of the type of consultant you want. You also want to mention that the consultant needs to work closely with the Village's steering committee and assist to take the lead in public presentations at key stages. If you provide the first draft of the RFP, we will review and contribute to it. My colleague David McLeod and I will work with you on this. Best wishes, Peter Walsh. So that, we haven't received it yet, but when it comes in, um, I'm just going to suggest that we ask Mr. Renan, our Village attorney, to look that contract over before the mayor signs it. The next letter we have, uh, was dated October fifth, it was, uh, from Mr. and Mrs. Ross Jackson. It was, "Dear Board Members and Employees, we would like to take this opportunity to thank the Board and the Village Crew for their expeditious response to our request for some sort of resolution to our drainage problem. Special thanks to Brian Pelkey and Kelly Penfield for going to that for us at the meeting. Their efforts on behalf of ourselves and the Bootons are very much appreciated. Sincerely, Mr. and Mrs. Ross Jackson." The next letter was dated October sixth, uh, was addressed, uh, "Dear Sirs," is from Babi Construction. Dear Sirs, this letter is to update the original letter of intent to develop the property owned by Gary L. Babi and Gary A. Babi of Babi Construction located South Smith Street that was sent to the Village of Russell Point in June of two thousand and two. Last month we were informed at the moratorium the Village passed restricting subdivisions of three or more lots. Upon visiting the Village office to confirm that our original letter of intent was unfiled, we were informed that there was no copy of this on record, as it was our understanding that the Village was properly informed of our intentions by sending the original letter of intent. We wish to proceed with our original intentions to develop this property beginning in spring slash summer two thousand and four. Should the Village have any concerns about the financial burden that a new subdivision would cause, we would like to inform you that our property is located outside of the Village Electric franchise and that electric utilities would be supplied by NICEC. Therefore, the Village would incur no cost to the supplying of electrical services. This would greatly minimize the financial burden the Village would incur should this development proceed. Thank you in advance to your time and attention to this matter, Gary L. Babi." All I can tell you is that, uh, on this, in this folder, we don't, we have correspondence, hope we don't have what we identified to be a letter of intent.
Yeah, that's sort of worked up to here. And, uh, any underground power goes in there, see that that's in the village limits. Uh, there is a local laws or whatever it is, a bellycoat, they'll ask the underground. The streetlight, we're not supposed to. How many of yous want to do?
I think we just need to take some time to research this and see what it's all about. Look back at the folder, see what's in it, see what the other correspondence is.
Okay, just stay with the note. Action to the, let's take action on that though.
You can table, you can research, that's what you like.
I think you should.
And that's all the correspondence we have.
Thank you, Bill. Goodbye to all of us. The Board of Mayor and the Board trustees. Uh, first thing on my agenda is the NIPA meeting scheduled for October twenty-ninth in Syracuse, semi-annual meeting. Uh, I cannot attend that meeting, I don't know if anybody else can on twenty-ninth. I'll be out of town. We haven't attended, uh, any of these anyway, only unless they were, don't be real important. I don't really see anything on the agenda here, but stands out to me, so. Okay, uh, next thing on my agenda is, I have a proposal here. Uh, is this from you, Doug?
Surveying?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's from the surveyor, WCT, that we used in the past, for Village jobs, where they have an alcohol.
I talked with our Village engineer, John Carr, uh, one or two weeks ago. I talked about the sewer line, the forced vein, going through Shazzy Hardware's property. And it leads to why the subject came up, because Shazzy Hardware asked for a building permit to put up some sort of a shed back there. I talked with the, you know, where it's Shazzy Hardware, and it said, I, under what John has suggested, that we need to get that survey, get that right away marked out, so that they don't end up building something on top of that. Out there, and, uh, they were pretty much in favor of having it done, because then they said, we would go too. We understand it the right away, but we don't know, really know where it is out there either. Yeah, that's all got to be dug up on the next contract, if we ever get that thing from the state. The, the contract one ended right at their property. The next one is, that's where that Y is located, a check valve out there, and it's all got to come out. And that's part of that contract. So for three-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars it's going to cost to get surveyed, and I would think that's a very excellent idea to get done.
Wasn't there a survey, I'm wondering, what that go?
It's not marked out.
I know, like, the first, like, I think it was like, the first five years, they paid the miller's like a thousand, thousand a year, like, kind of rent the land and use the land.
No, but it's not marked out, so nobody knows where it is in that lumberyard. And that's the object of the survey, to get it marked out.
Need a motion on?
Yeah, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we hire the surveyors to survey the land.
I'll second that. Motion by trustee Menard, seconded by trustee Jefferson, any, any discussion?
So we have, with all of the plans that we have for the, the upcoming project, we have nothing that shows where this is?
According to John, we don't.
No, it shows where it is, but in this case, what's been asked is that these people want to know exactly where it is on the ground out there. So we're having a licensed land surveyor come out and lay it out, so that it's according to law, because it's easement, it's, it's real property, it's going to be legal. We'll show them exactly, this is the Village's easement, so do not fill in this area. So, I mean, we could go out there with a tape measure and approximate off of the plans and say, it's about this, plus or minus, um, and that's an option.
When did we have payment easement?
Easement's been there since the line was put in.
When they built the source land.
Okay. It surprises me there would be nothing on paper like that already.
Well, it might be on plan, but in terms of it being on boundary survey, um, that's, that's nothing you would have. Maybe, maybe Dave Shazzy Hardware had it, but apparently they don't, because they come to the Village asking, and where does it go? It might show up in their deed description, you know, all that plan, accepting so-and-so, so-and-so, but it's never been laid out in their backyard. So they've asked the Village, will you please lay it out? And you have a choice of laying it out in a, you know, a plus or minus, um, few feet pattern, or getting a licensed land surveyor out there to make it plus or minus tenths of inches.
And putting one of your markers in, so it's firmly laid marked.
And when it comes to that kind of accuracy, you have to put in pins, that's, has to be done by a licensed land surveyor.
Right, I understand that. Just like I said, it surprises me that when, at the time, it wasn't done.
It's, it's already possible it was done, but, uh, pins aren't there, things that had knocked out, things in place.
That was a field, it was just a field.
I know that.
Well, what I'm saying is, when they built it, probably, when they put the stuff in, they got, they got taken out.
That would have holded it over.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Uh, next thing on my agenda is, uh, the old sewer cleaner, pressure washer. Uh, we have a bid from the Townomores for two thousand dollars. And, uh, recommend we sell it to them for that. We're going to have the use of it, we need it, but it could happen hours.
Mr. Mayor, I couldn't find it in the minutes where we had declared a surplus, so if you do this, could I ask if anybody makes a motion to, A, declare a surplus, and then authorize the sale, so we'll have it for the record? I couldn't find it in the minutes.
I think they did that, but we need to.
I know we talked about it, but there was never a motion made, from what I could tell.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we surplus the pressure washer and sell it to the Townomores.
Okay. Motion made, seconded, any discussion? Motion by trustee Menard, seconded by trustee Hoprow. No discussion, all those in favor, vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Uh, next thing on the agenda is, "The fall being updated for the Village of Russell Point will commence in the week of October twentieth and continue through Thursday, October twenty-third, two thousand and three. Residents are requested to bag as much of the material as possible and place it curbside by seven-thirty a.m. in such manner so it does not interfere with parked cars. This will greatly facilitate the collection. Residents are reminded that this collection is for pickup, is for the pickup of bag clipping sleeves and brush no larger than three inches in diameter only." Right, for Halloween. Last thing on my agenda, uh, I request permission to attend a meeting on October twenty-first in Albany on the economic development of municipal electric. Uh, this should be the last meeting, I hope it finalizes what we did in the last, uh, the last meeting. Yes, I do have it, I'll second it. Motion made by trustee Hoprow, seconded by trustee Jefferson, any discussion? There be no discussion, all those in favor, vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. And that's it for me, trustee Menard.
Uh, first item on my agenda is a discussion. Um, apparently there's been a new law, new laws have come into effect, um, for school zone, speed, uh, speed zone, um, and Chief Craig asked me to, uh, run this by the Board and see what they felt. Um, it says, "Effective nine-twenty-four, two thousand and three, new legislation has been passed to change the distance each side of a school building where a school zone speed limit can be established from three-hundred feet to thirteen-hundred and twenty-five feet or a quarter mile when a street passes an entrance or exit to a school." Um, so what he's proposing is that we, we've had problems before where we have the learning center, and we have the, the elementary school, and there's like five-hundred feet in the middle there where it's not a school zone. So what he's proposing is that we make that all school zone, from Chapman Street, basically to Pine Street on Maple Street, and then from, on Academy Street, from the stop sign at the corner of Wyatt, by the parking lot, and then straight down to Lake Street. And with that new, uh, with the new additions there, um, there would be, it would be all legal and everything, we don't need any laws, we just need to post the school zone. Um, that way we don't have any discrepancies, well, this was three-hundred feet, and you had that five-hundred feet of open space in the middle. That way we have one clear school zone on both streets.
And yeah, it also might help us with the, we have a little bit of people racing down the.
Right, right, so anywhere in that school zone would be a twenty mile an hour school zone, and that would be, especially with the new street paving, that would, uh, up slower running down.
Do we need to put that in front of the washing, or?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the, um, new school zone from Chapman Street on Maple, from Chapman Street to Pine Street on Maple, and on Academy Street, from the stop sign by Wyatt Hartman, to Lake Street.
Okay. Motion made by trustee Menard, seconded by trustee Hoprow, any discussion? There be no discussion, all those in favor, vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Uh, my next item is a informative, um, one for the Village. Uh, we have a power outage on October twenty-fifth, two thousand and three, from approximately six a.m. to noon, until noon. Um, we have a couple of tie-ins that we need to get taken care of, and a couple of upgrades, so we'll be, we'll have a power outage. We've already, uh, contacted Wyatt, and we'll be getting a power outage. Um, Phil, should we probably publish that in the paper?
Yeah, I mean, we can put it in the paper as a press release, and if you folks wanted to expend a little bit of money, I can't guess, I look that anywhere from a hundred to a hundred and seventy-five dollars. We could do a display ad as well, which would, you know, be a little more, you know, obvious for people, if you wanted to do that in addition to a press release.
Yeah, please. I'll make a motion that we, uh, do the press release and make a graph, so that everybody knows. That'd be on a Saturday, right, Ron?
Indeed.
Rain date will be Sunday, the same time?
Yes.
Twenty-sixth. We put that all in, that all in the ad.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by trustee Menard, seconded by trustee Pentfield, any discussion? There be no discussion, all those in favor, vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
And my last item is a bit of good news for everybody. Uh, last Friday, we awarded the paving contract award to, uh, Luck Brothers, and they're going to begin reconstructing Maple Street, finally. And hopefully, oh yeah, thirty days, forty-five days?
Um, yeah, actually, um, a quick update on that. Contracts were signed today in a brief, uh, pre-construction conference conducted. Uh, Luck Brothers indicated they would begin work on Wednesday of this week, maybe a day quicker. Uh, drafted up a bit of a notice, and, uh, Village staff will be circulating that around, uh, informing the residents what's, what's, uh, going to happen, as well as, uh, asking for a little understanding of some inconvenience, because people will be inconvenienced during the work. Hopefully, uh, hopefully those will be minimal, but, uh, will, uh, cause some, some additional inconvenience. Um, the sidewalks reconstruction has commenced. Uh, Luck Brothers is thinking that that work would be done in two or three weeks, certainly by November first. Uh, and the paving contract calls for, uh, the base coat of paving to be completed somewhere around November first of this year, and then a second finish coat next spring. So things are going to look a little smoother, hopefully, on, uh, Maple Street. Um, they are going to extend their working hours to facilitate the paving. Uh, so they, they are intending to work, begin working around seven, continue on through later. Uh, reviewed everything pretty closely with, uh, Brian, and, um, there's a couple of things that are pretty critical, but everybody's pretty, uh, aware of what needs to be done and what needs to happen, and hopefully, uh, things will be in pretty good shape here by the middle of, uh, beginning of July.
Thanks, John. Hopefully, within the next month, everything will be tied up. You might experience some inconveniences between now and then, but please bear with us, and do the best you can. And that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you, trustee Menard, trustee Hoprow.
First item, I would like to make a motion to authorize Mike Rowley and Gary Moeweski to attend a one-day laboratory training seminar in Plattsburgh on the twelfth of November, and the fee for that is fifty dollars.
Second.
Motion made by trustee Hoprow, seconded by trustee Menard, any discussion? There be no discussion, all those in favor, vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Uh, I would like to request an executive session to discuss electric department personnel.
Second.
Motion made by trustee Hoprow, seconded by trustee Pentfield, vote for a vote. Uh, trustee Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Hoprow.
Aye.
Trustee Pentfield.
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Mayor votes aye.
I would like to request an executive session to discuss central personnel.
Second.
Motion made by trustee Hoprow, seconded by trustee Menard, vote for a vote, trustee Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Hoprow.
Aye.
Trustee Pentfield.
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye.
Uh, water tank update, who's talking? Doug?
On the water storage tank, uh, they've, uh, Landmark is back, and they've completed the concrete four-slap in, uh, that portion of the tank, and, as you guys know, we ended up getting that as kind of added value from the contractor, that was a good move. They've also completed their work on the piping inside the water tank. And, uh, Landmark works like a ten, twelve, fifteen days on, four days off kind of, uh, schedule, so they're going to be, uh, bugging out on Wednesday, but before they leave early next week, they're going to start filling and disinfecting that water tank, so, um, that's what's happening on that. On the transmission main, they're working on punch list and, uh, the boring under the road under Route eleven in front of the Village offices has been completed, and, uh, they're working on pressure testing that sixteen-inch main that goes under the road and goes up to the water tank, and that's, uh, taking longer than expected, and hopefully that's going to be completed successfully this week. And, any questions?
Doug, have we finally settled on where it crosses Maple Street?
On the, uh...
The sixteen-inch water main?
The question of the depth of cover, the insulation?
I continue to be concerned about.
Yes, did you get a copy of the correspondence from John Carr?
No, I did not.
Okay. Okay. There was a, uh, a letter that was issued that documented, um, that study to show that, uh, that pipe is well insulated and over insulated in a sense and, uh, um, and so, uh, that came out. I, I'm surprised you haven't seen it yet. We have a poor looking copy here tonight you can read, but, uh...
I may have, I have just sent it away all week, so I have not got...
Oh, okay.
I only got some I needed.
All right, well, that report that I alluded to the last time I addressed you, uh, has been issued and is out on the table and if anyone has any questions, she's got it. Then, uh, let's talk about it.
I'm not, I'm not particularly concerned about the water drainage there because I expect that there'll be some pour all night.
Yeah.
My, my concern was, was a pretty possible, possibly popping that sixteen inch main.
No, I don't, I don't think so. Based on what I said previously and was backed up by John's complete analysis with our assistance, we feel okay with the water line where it is. Uh, the reason it was put where it was and that it, measures were taken to protect it so that it can't exist there.
Hey, I just wanted to note it, right? Let's go. You guys are smart about this, I'm not.
Well, no, I...
This isn't authentic.
I understand and, uh, thank, I think the record shows and time will tell.
Um, okay, thank you. Um, any, I can bring John for the answer this. Um, any word on the, um, thirty-six inch pipe to the Big Day drink, John, as to whether I can be included bond or not? There's a concern as to whether I can be part of the bond, the water to the bond? The pipe, just by the pipe there?
Basically, um, it certainly is eligible for inclusion in that funding program. What I had requested with the Flint County Health Department was their opinion as to whether they would support a delay in construction of that piping. And that was done at the board's request. Uh, that request is still outstanding and they're looking things over between Plattsburgh and Albany. The general feeling that I got from the board was that we'd like to delay the construction of that for five, six, seven years.
I don't think so. I don't think that was very attached.
It's basically what I got out of the meeting minutes. Wasn't at that meeting.
That was mentioned in the reading, but I...
I didn't think the timeframe was quite so long, but we had discussed it.
Well, actually, I think that if this is something we gotta do, we know we gotta do it, why should we put off buying the materials for next year when it's gonna be six or ten percent more? You know, I mean, it's gonna cost us a month, Brian, it's sixty to sixty-five thousand. We add ten more thousand next year, that's, or six more thousand next year, that's seventy thousand. Why shouldn't we go ahead and get the stuff? And you said you're cool to do it next year, right? I thought we were gonna wait.
We had talked about perhaps waiting, I thought for like a couple of years. I think, I think the timeframe is not quite as far out there as five, seven, that's my recollection and I sort of had the greatest...
Definitely wasn't five.
I were waiting for...
But why would we want to wait?
The Health Department to see what...
And that, that was my impression. We were waiting for the okay from the Health Department. So we got that, we were gonna go ahead and order the pipe.
Order the pipe.
And, and just store it on, on the property there until next year.
And we do have the okay from the Health Department to use that method, so...
Oh, yeah.
Since we've got the okay, why not get it done with it? We just hit the bond.
Yeah, my impression from the meeting was, uh, when I told John, uh, was that you, you wanted to be in control, put it in when you wanted to, when you were ready with your people, but I didn't realize you wanted to buy the pipe, which makes sense.
Makes sense to buy the bond right now.
Yeah, it does, but I, I didn't realize that. I just thought you were gonna keep total control of it and do it when you were ready to be that one, two, three, whatever.
We want to get the pipe, so we can get it off the bond, so why not do it?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, but I did not convey that to John, so...
Shame on you. No, um, too much trying to cover, Doug, with everything, but, um, I really think we ought to go ahead and get it done with it, with it happen. And if Brian does have the ability to do it next summer, because his workload hopefully will be somewhat less. Do we need a motion on that or what do we?
Pursue it for that.
Huh?
Iowa pursues it for that.
I mean, what's everybody else feel?
I agree, I think that, uh, we should, we should purchase the material right now. If, I mean, I think we have to wait for the blessings of the State Health Department.
Right.
Once we have that blessing, go ahead and purchase it.
But that's the end of the book.
Everything's in the book, so, you know...
Do you need a moment, Bill? Yes.
Um, if you're gonna wait to confirm that Health Department's gonna go along with all the...
Yeah, exactly, right.
Yeah, we have to wait for the Health Department to...
Yeah. But the consensus of the board is that we'll go ahead with it. When we get that in and when we...
If we have to.
Same, same as the old code.
Yeah. If we don't have to, then we won't do it, right? We have to wait for, as long as we wait for DEC, we might be here for a while. Didn't John think, think that we might not have to do it? Didn't you say that to us, that we, well, we might not have to do it?
That was from, actually, that was a letter that we got back from the Health Department, your response to, so checking that, that I asked Bill to do, so...
Yes, and unfortunately, the Health Department, uh, wrote the letter in the middle of the statement. Following that letter, when I got with the Health Department, myself, uh, explained what the situation was. At that time, we had requested his support in perhaps delaying the construction.
Look.
If we don't do it, whenever the thing go down, we're gonna be loyalized.
You got it.
If we do it, that was my understanding, but you didn't. That's the whole purpose of this project, is to get around it.
It's not only the least expensive thing to do, but it's, uh, you know, it's no maintenance.
Right.
Okay. Um, next item is, uh, Fourth of July celebrations. We had our first meeting this evening and, uh, Fourth of July celebration vote won, the second, third, and fourth of July, two thousand and four. And anybody that's interested in serving on the committee will have our next meeting in this room at six o'clock on January fifth. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, trustee Hotbro, trustee Penfield.
Um, it's my understanding that the new fire truck will arrive in the village sometime, uh, I guess approximately the first week of November. Um, I also understood, I'm speaking with Brian before the meeting, that members of the Truck Committee will be going, is it the end of this week, Brian?
Yes, Thursday, correct.
And you'll be viewing the truck as it stands now?
Yes.
Okay.
Truck was delivered to the facility in Montpelot and they mounted the pump on the truck and they fabricated the, all the bike for the truck. Before they permanently mount it, detain it, they want us to go and inspect every, all the working equipment that's done. Make sure that the size of the compartments, the lighting, everything is pretty much our specifications and we need to, uh, pick out the design of the striding of the truck and how we want it leathered. So it's like, uh, before it goes into the paint job, we wanna make sure it's exactly what we expect now. If there's any changes, it's time to do it before it's painted.
Is there anything you need from us in order to do that? No, sir. Would that be great? Um, I have an item to request an executive session to discuss library personnel.
Second.
Motion by trustee Penfield, seconded by trustee Menard. Menard, menard. Vote, call, vote. Trustee Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Hotbro. Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson. Aye. And the mayor votes aye.
Um, the next item I have is, as we all know, um, our employees who needed to go through the confined space training, that was mentioned during the correspondence, part of the meeting on September twenty-fourth, the training took place for them. Um, and I understand from, from speaking with Phil that there is also some equipment that we need to have in order to be in compliance with what's required for the village in terms of confined space training. We have a quote here from Beland Equipment, um, having to do with a rescue retrieval unit and I guess certain harnesses and, and signs that go along with that. So this is a quote that was established for us so that we could go ahead and be in compliance, so, um, I don't know if you have a copy of that or not.
You want that cut, move?
Yeah, excuse me a little bit.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and purchase the equipment that's needed for the confined space rescue.
Motion made, seconded, any discussion? I understand that we're gonna split this up amongst departments?
Yes.
Does it be used by all departments? Any other discussion? All in favor, vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
You may ask for a second with, uh, John.
John.
Okay, um, the next item I, I'm sorry. Okay, the next item I have has to do with some training for our planning and zoning board members. Um, I agree with, with George in terms of establishing a list of people so that when we do have, um, people who, who are unable to continue on these, these boards, that we do have people who can step up and replace them who are interested. This is a training that's gonna take place on Tuesday, October twenty-eighth, two thousand and three. Um, I think that we can call anytime before October twenty-fourth to have people register for this. I know our code enforcement officer has also looked this over and thinks it would be an excellent couple of sessions for people to attend. There is a zoning board meeting next week and I'll bring this up with them then and see if we can get a number of people who might be wanting to attend. I'm gonna check my calendar for that date to see whether or not I can go, but I would also be interested. Might we be going or, okay, so there'll be two of us, but we'll get a final count. There is no charge as far as I know.
Twenty-five dollars.
Um, no, that's if you're, you're gonna get the continuing ed credits.
Oh.
There's no fee to attend the session, so...
Oh, okay.
And they just want us to call by October twenty-fourth so that they can have a number so they can better plan for what side of the roof they're going to be...
So, okay.
Anyone on board interested in going?
So, twenty, what, if you got...
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-four, John.
So I'll make sure that we get Mike included, I'll check for myself and then I'll ask them to tweet at the meeting. See whether or not they want to attend. Okay? Okay, the last item I have tonight is, um, having to do with the library. As you know, I, I had, uh, mentioned at the last meeting that I attended a library board meeting and there's still concerns with some of the repairs that they feel should be done to the building. Um, one of the things that, uh, we've arranged to do, Phil and Brian went over and met with Art Tremblay about, um, some of the ideas they have, sort of problem with the snow falling off the roof. And I think that we have that pretty well in hand and it's something that we can take care of sometime in the next couple of months, hopefully before the snow flies. And also, um, Phil had received a quote from Theodore Stae to do the pressure washing and some of the maintenance on the outside of the building. And, um, it seems like something that needs to be done. I know Phil and Brian also checked that and they went over there to meet with Arthur, so I guess that it's probably a good time to get it done. We have had money in the budget the last couple of years to take care of that and it's only going to get worse. So I guess he's available, he can do the work. Phil, we had talked about perhaps calling him to see whether or not he can still do it this year or whether or not first thing this spring would be a good idea?
He didn't call back.
He didn't call you back? But when you spoke to him originally, he mentioned that he could fit in this year?
Yes, he did.
So I think that...
Do it.
Do it. So I'll make a motion that we go ahead and accept his, his written quote, too.
I'll second it.
No, the repairs done.
Motion made by trustee Penfield, seconded by trustee Jefferson. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all in favor, vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
I'd just like to make a note on that, we did send, uh, quotes out to seven different places in states where the only one ever responded to us, so, you know, we did try. And, uh, Brian felt he did review their quote based on what they say they're going to do and we feel the price is in line with, uh, with what they're planning on doing and it should, you know, bring that, the exterior of that building back up or at least some line.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you, trustee Penfield, trustee Jefferson. Y'all got anything on the sewer?
Um, I don't know, John might have covered it all previously with the authorization. I don't think there's anything else. No word from DOT on our DEC, on our outfall? First on the holding pattern now?
Okay, late schedule tonight, nothing to report. You're done?
Done.
Thank you, trustee Jefferson.
Thank you, Phil.
Phil?
Yeah, I'm... Yeah, um, I just wanted to, uh, it was my first Nikon conference that Arsene and I went to. It was in Lake Placid, it was, uh, extremely informative for a first-time attendee, uh, I found it very, very good and met a lot of people, uh, got to, uh, learn some of the, the different nuances of the job, so to speak, and I do appreciate the ability to, uh, to have gone, I think, uh...
Thank you, Arsene.
Couple things, uh, first of all, I just want to remind property owners that, uh, this is the last month to pay the taxes until they turn over the calendar collection. We haven't paid your taxes yet. And also, too, I forgot to bring it up when we were discussing the minutes, but, um, I'd like to have in the record that, you know, the meeting of Fridays, September twenty-sixth, I, I had been in the meeting. And, uh, fall training school, I had the opportunity to meet, uh, State Controller Hesse and, um, Nikon President Murray, who they presented me with a fifteen-year certificate for attending fifteen fall training schools. That's all I had to report on that.
Thank you, Arsene. Brian?
I'm Doug.
Just on Route eleven upgrade, I spoke to the DOT on Friday and, uh, some of you may know the, uh, bids were received for the Champlain Street, Lake Street upgrade to happen next year and the bids came in, the low bid was over budget, but, uh, the DOT said that this region, Water Town, is going to recommend Albany that they go forward with the project anyways. And so, that means it's likely still going to happen, they'll award the contract this quarter and then we'll be looking at construction, destruction of Route eleven, uh, next spring.
John?
Nothing special, I think we're finally beginning to see a few things finished, which is, uh, is kinda nice. Hopefully, light and liberty and speed will be paid by the end of this week.
Mike?
Uh, just a couple things, um, I'd like to stress again with Kelly that this zoning training that they're gonna have is gonna be, I think it's extremely important that anybody in the zoning board or the planning board that you're gonna have here, if you know who these people are gonna be, that they try to attend this because it's very important. Other than that, I attended a school last week on handicap accessibility, can tell you what's accessible and what isn't now. And I'll be finishing up my training the next three days this week after that. If I pass, I should be certified. Other than that, everything goes well.
Thank you. I hope the meeting of the public comment at this time. I'm gonna wish to address the board. We will have a motion for recess.
Good.
Second. Ten of eight. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried, we're gonna reset in five minutes. Two minutes.